Pause and start again if you want. There we go. Okay. Sorry, Hootie.
Okay.
Okay, I'll open up this meeting of the planning board for the town of Maynard. Today's meeting is May ninth, two thousand twenty-three, and the time is seven oh one P M. We are conducting this meeting in hybrid format, which means that members of the public and the board can either participate here in person at town hall or on the Zoom link that was provided on the agenda. All members of the board are here tonight. We will turn to item two. The, and Bill, item two is for the continuance with Capitol Group. Do I need to reopen this hearing, or can I just make a motion to continue since the applicant requested a continuance?
I think you could make a motion to continue and have a say at the board, but that's board's pleasure.
Jim, um, we did, we did, yeah.
Just to give the board a little background, um, we were, we were clear that we, you know, wanted ahead of time. And they, in all fairness to the applicant, they told us, you know, we're having trouble with getting to turn around with it. Um, and they asked for a, um, one month, uh, continuance, which brought them to the June, uh, first June meeting.
Yeah, which would be, uh.
Was it this, right?
June thirteenth.
June thirteenth, yeah.
Well, who that David and I are continuing tomorrow. Okay, I'll make a motion to continue this hearing to June thirteenth. And this is the hearing for the modification of the site plan for Maynard Crossing, particularly the childcare center located, um, at Maynard Crossing. And petitioner is Capitol Group. And they continued was requested by the petitioner. And the continuance was requested by the petitioner. Yes. Oh, check of that. Okay, all in favor by hand? Um, and that, can you vote on this one, please?
Yes.
Thank you. So it's five zero in favor of the continuance.
Thank you.
Okay.
No.
Well, this is over. Yeah. Well, yes, probably not hit to.
No, I just, for the record, whoever's.
Oh, yeah, Annette voted.
Uh, sorry.
Yeah.
All right, item two, oh, sorry, let's turn to item one, meeting minutes. This is the meeting minutes from April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three. I move that we adopt the end of.
I can, that will come. Okay. In the public hearing, the second paragraph, it says the solar panel wave cover an existing parking lot. We've discussed why we cover part of an existing parking lot.
Where is it?
Here in second paragraph.
Page two.
Oh, color report to the existing parking lot.
Okay.
And then on the last page, the, uh, Google minutes. Now reads that I asked the committee members' addresses be removed from minutes. I forget, I was like, green committee, I forget.
Move it into.
Oh, oh.
It was random people, right?
No, it wasn't. They were representing something.
Because he said that they were already on record.
Um, it was.
It was probably the tree committee.
The tree committee. Okay, that it wasn't necessary because they're representing treatment.
Good one.
Hold on. Any other, any other requests or changes? I, I do find that minutes are a little light on the Maynard Crossing hearing. Um, there's only, there's a paragraph that describes the request, and then three sentences of what was, I, I recalled about a forty-five minute discussion, which is fine because we have it publicly recorded. Uh, I'm, I'm just pointing out that that is a little different than what I typically see for the level of detail for minutes. But I'm nothing but a problem. Is that okay, though?
Boards, different boards have different expectations of minutes. In the case where their video, you know, essentially, we have the whole thing if somebody's interested in it, but the key, the motions, the approvals that the individuals involved, and I think anybody could read this and understand exactly what happened. If they wanted details on why the board thought this may be, um, it would go in one way or something like that, you could go more. I mean, we could certainly go more into detail, but I, I think these are, like I said, it's recorded.
Yeah.
So I think it's okay. I think we, we, we go probably a little further than most on their minutes, I think, personally.
Does anyone have any?
Well, let me pile on with a similar point under planning updates.
Yeah.
Free bullet points as the topics, but there's no context with this course.
In the, in the meeting minutes?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Right. I think those were the topics that were discussed, but, you know, a sentence on each of them, I just like.
We can, we can always expand that, if you want, I mean, you know, most of these, I, I could certainly put a sentence in. Sure. Would you prefer I add today this, update this one, or? And I can certainly put a sentence for each, uh, Two Powder Road, we can, that was, um, you know, um, just status on the ad and sap property, you know, M B T A communities, uh, talking about, we had, you know, been awarded, or we, it's been accepted, our proposal for M B T A committees. Out of my quarter was that we had focus group, you know, that was, um, whatever, whatever the board's pleasure is.
I'd say maybe going forward, just a hint more, uh.
Okay. Noted.
Because people definitely can request minute videos, but nobody's gonna do that, so.
What? Nobody's on?
I, I, I find it unlikely that people will really do that very often, request videos.
Someday, all our videos will be here.
You know. I wasn't gonna say, oh.
By me.
I, I have a secret archive.
It's a good topic anyways.
Yeah.
What is the level of detail we're looking for? Uh, I, I find the first item on this meeting minutes, the Maynard High School discussion, to be adequate for the discussion that we had. It, it just seems that this Maynard Crossing, this, um, meeting minutes are just lacking on sort of content.
Fair enough. So it's somewhere in between this level and the one where they described my tirade against capitalism, somewhere in between those.
Well, that was in there.
Yeah, we had it, remember?
We were four months ago.
Yeah, that was.
And I made a motion to separate it from the record.
I know.
But it happened here.
It was irrelevant.
Well.
I don't, I remember that, but I can't remember what the project was.
It was irrelevant from a planning board rules and regulations standpoint.
Not from an emotional standpoint.
It was about the A R.
Well.
Okay. Uh, I'm fine with the meeting minutes, as noted by Bill, and shows changes. Are there any other changes? Or do we want Bill to update this? And then we'll, we'll go redo it there.
What time will you?
Uh, update it? Okay, because the request was made, Bill, under planning updates, to just add a sentence of context.
Oh, I will do it, and you want me to bring it back for approval or not? Was amended.
Uh, bring it back with you.
Okay.
All right, so I'll make a motion. Do we have to make a motion on that?
No, I'd say go next time.
All right.
I'll bring him to the, I can, we're both to the meeting next week, I can bring him to the five hour. Yeah.
Well, thanks. Um, Jim, point of order.
Yes, sir.
Uh, the reason I, I made a motion to reject the minutes, uh, it was not seconded. Uh, it should be moved and seconded and then a discussion, no discussion before. So in the future, we need to clean that up just a little bit so we don't.
Oh, that's noted, Jim. I was under the impression discussions could be had either time, but I take, I, I take that into account.
Well, it is, you have to do the discussion after that, the motion.
Okay, we will improve that. Okay, I feel like we've done that a lot in the past, haven't we?
All right, cool.
Okay.
So what I'm going to just be clear, what I'm going to do, I can build changes, build crunch changes, and then I'll add a little, um, the, the, a quick, uh, word under each planning update, and we're ready to board. And, um, we can maybe even do a, I don't mean.
Okay, and for, for your reading. I don't, I, um, I think there's a, there is a good example, if you don't bring us applicants into the discussion in detail with them, we're going to discuss in detail with the meeting today.
That's a great point, yeah.
I mean, I'm gonna rush, but since it's clear, just as long as I're blessed, we need to get some applicants.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, good.
Okay.
Okay.
So that's item one, and two. All right, town meeting prep and discussion for two board items. Bill, oh, and so to you.
Oh, it's your turn to you.
Okay, I can.
But from, because our meeting is sworn, um, I, you know.
Basically, I can give an update. So we met with the town moderator, called a meeting with, um, all members, all stakeholders that were participating, that planned to participate in the upcoming town meeting. Bill and I represented the planning board on that. Uh, there are thirty-eight, uh, articles in the town warrants. We have the last four. Um, the, the moderator is expecting, uh, my, well, my perspective is he's saving the best for last, which I think is very appropriate.
Oh.
But the, the moderator and other members of staff are planning for two nights of town meeting, um, as, as a contingency plan. I don't know if that's gonna be the case or not. Um, in the past, so the, the way the moderator described it is that a town meeting can require a second night if someone, a member of the public, uh, requests a continuance, essentially. Jim, you know this better than I do, but basically a member of the public, he said, could request a continuance, and then the moderator has the ability to choose to accept that or not. Is my understanding?
Well, it can be done by the moderator itself. Okay. If he deems that the, uh, proceedings are going on too long, or there's something else, but, um, uh, the, uh, just like the comment, uh, because you were interested. Uh, I thought, I was moderator for thirteen years, and my brain never worked this out. But, um, the town of Athens has done it differently. They break up their town meeting into two trots, and they cut the articles in half. So the first, you know, going in, the articles one through sixteen will be the first night, then they quit. Then the second team is second. So it works out better for everyone because the tummies run too long, and there's no, uh, class block. Many people go to the town meeting after they've worked all day long. They ask maybe small tour, and they have official article they'd like to speak, uh, and, and vote on, but they don't know when it's gonna be. So I thought the town of Athens made a very good decision by breaking it up into two. But I looked at the, the town warrant when I got this, uh, last week, and, uh, it is too long. It can't possibly be done in one, uh, unless you go on about two o'clock in the morning, and by then you've lost the forum, so, uh, the town board corrected, our, our articles will last, appear on the first night.
And that's, I think that's what he's setting the expectation for.
Yeah.
Uh, did, did the moderator request the full planning board's presence? Do you recall? He did. So the, he requested the full planning board's presence. I understand if there's other obligations and members can't make it, but that was the request from the town moderator. Uh, I plan to present the, I'm listed as the one presenting on the four articles for the planning board, and Bill is listed as the technical expert answering technical questions. Um, I will provide a presentation. I will read off, so each article itself has a statement from the planning board that's drafted and reviewed by us. I will provide that plenty of statement uh, for each article. And then I will, uh, answer any questions, uh, any questions that are technically oriented. I will defer the bill, uh, if they're oriented towards the perspective of the planning board, I will do my best to answer those questions. Um, I have a presentation, we prepared a presentation that is, uh, in substance, very similar to the presentation we provided previously during planning board hearings for the home-based business article. Uh, there, I made some minor tweaks to the language and tightened up some things and, um, just made it more presentable from, from a large audience perspective that are seeing it from, from, from the floor of the auditorium. Um, but it's, it's, in substance, it's the same presentation. I will be presenting that, um, right before we, uh, as called on for article, I believe it's thirty-seven for the home-based business. Um, and then we, uh, we were able to discuss with the moderator to structure the order of the articles. Um, so that it starts with, the first article is, I believe, body art establishments. The second article is
The downtown.
The, the updates to the downtown overlay district in section nine point four point five, which discusses, um, expands on the portable housing units and the A M I calculations. Um, for the bonus units, article three is home-based business, and then article four is trade shop. We notify the moderator that if the article for home-based businesses doesn't pass, then we will withdraw the article for the trade shop because they're connected to each other.
I thought I heard the moderator say he was planning on grouping some of the those articles, our articles.
He did, and what did that mean to you?
Well, it meant that he was gonna discuss and vote on thirty-seven, thirty-eight simultaneously, which would preclude the need for a withdrawal.
Oh, wait, but if he, so he made him like one vote?
Yeah.
We would.
I guess, it kind of, I kind of thought he was gonna group the other ones, too, but, you know, that's in the hurry up and finish it in the one-night scenario versus, you know, now we're all refreshed, we're night number two. So I don't know, I'd be, I'd make sure you checked with him.
I thought I did today, I asked someone about that.
But he did mention group it.
All right, well, I'll, I'll double check that, um.
Did group a lot. Would you mind giving clarity on that, Bill Nemzner?
Yeah, I will do it. But you're saying, Bill, i- i- if you put like thirty-nine, or what is it, thirty-eight, thirty-nine together? And the idea being that if they both send, they send together.
Right, doesn't matter, right? You know, actually putting those both together might be okay, maybe a little confusing.
Can they do that? He can do that with the, the two. I wonder why, because I thought that he mentioned that originally. But then we're.
Let's just get clarity.
All right, I'll get clarity, yeah, I'll get clarity, okay.
They, they do that a lot, and they just, if, if it doesn't pass, then they'll re-vote on them individually, is the way it usually does.
Yeah, I mean, he likes to group them all.
Yeah.
They like to lump them all together and push them through so an vote can make things go better. Okay, because these, these, yeah, are these ballot votes?
If, um, all of the planning board items would be secret, I believe, two-thirds ballot vote.
How?
Yeah, go big time. And being, being the end of the meeting, I, I, on the first night, I doubt, I doubt the moderator will want to go into four consecutive secret ballot votes. That will take a lot.
Yeah.
Okay. But thank you, thank you, Mr. Pancher.
And my other question from listening in on today's call was, do we get to sit up front or not? What was the call?
I answered it. He, he, he said that.
He didn't care.
He didn't care, and he said that it was, uh, up to a select board.
He deferred it to the select board, all that space sort of need.
So, uh, if we're not gonna be there to second my head, I mean, if we're not gonna be there virtual second night, you wouldn't want to be on the board, uh, on the stage?
I don't see a need for everyone to be on the stage if they don't want to be. I'm happy to do.
You realize we might be early in the first minute.
Probably, right?
Right.
But I mean.
It's not, it's not a certainty, it'll, it'll go.
No, no, no.
But members can then approach the stage if, if, if we feel that our articles will be heard.
Well, if, if we, whatever, if you.
You, there won't be any room to do so, because the expectation is the main room will be full and it'll be overflowing to the gym.
That's the expectation.
Yes.
Wow, I didn't know that. But they know they always do the second one, right?
Yeah, really.
And I haven't been around long enough to see, uh, that, that.
I only, I only done it once, twice, yeah.
But why do we used to be up on the board all, we used to be on the stage all the time? And then.
Yeah.
But what, was it because the school board wasn't up there, or the school committee wasn't up there?
I don't know. I think, I, yeah, my personal thing is people are moved off the stage just to make the audience bigger, because there are a lot of people on the stage.
Now, maybe, maybe just get clarification on that, too.
Yeah, okay.
Let me, sure. All right, well.
Yeah, I need to know what I should wear.
Okay, are we all gonna wear the same shirt?
Right.
Yeah.
Color code, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Town meeting twenty-three, you know?
Yeah, planning board rules, yeah. It is your plan, isn't it? We'll get it.
The other thing is that, uh, with, yeah, they may hear, I, I, I don't have any idea how long the other articles are gonna take, and maybe something just, you know, he might, he, he wanted to streamline. You know, a lot of, so maybe, I mean, like Bill's right, I mean, he could, could go right through, but he definitely set prepare for Tuesday.
I gotta let know, they, mine go more than twenty minutes total, then you can.
So we, oh, so you're gonna be the one holding it up?
Yeah.
Oh, with the, what do you have, the charter and the bylaw, right?
Charter and C P C.
As A B C?
Yeah.
But can you, you get all those?
As they can go.
Get them all along together, one vote?
The first nine will be, yeah.
Oh, that's good.
Yeah.
Unless I make a motion to separate them out.
Yes, correct, please do, yes. Separate the introduction to the charter separately, yes.
Okay, so that's town meeting. Any, any further discussion or questions about town meeting?
Well, I'm not, also not, since what I, Tom, I was not clear, I'm not clear, are we giving the presentation or not?
Or, or, you know, for the PowerPoint, home-based business?
Yeah.
Uh, the answer is yes.
Far as we're concerned.
As far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
Unless unless he, I would, if he lumps all our articles together, can I still give the presentation for home-based business?
I don't, I, I'm fine, I, I don't.
Jim? What's that? So we have one of our articles where we provided a preparative presentation by the home-based business, the one you've seen previously. The moderator lumps all of our four articles together, will I still be allowed to present that presentation?
Well, every town moderator has his own file and his own interpretation of the way it is. If I were to be the interpreter, I would say, yes, you'd have the opportunity and should have the presentation.
Can I request to make the presentation if you lump them all four together?
Yes, you can.
So I would say something on the order of, Mr. Moderator, I request to provide the presentation that be prepared to article thirty-seven, even though article thirty-five, thirty-eight are all together. I, I would, I would go with you.
I, I do have a feeling if he's done, he'll put the first two together and the last two together. But I like it, we'll do, at least not need permission. And he was putting together.
It, I, that's the, that's the perspective I got, too, but I would, I'll be prepared anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, I have a question, question online.
It also, yeah, online question.
Yeah, you can go ahead. You can, I don't mind taking the question if you can.
Uh, let me.
Yes, this is Roger Stillwater, Seventeen Sunset Road, and I had a question about, uh, uh, the warrant, uh, article, uh, thirty-four uh, with regard to the planning, uh, committee. I don't know if you want to take that now, or you want it later. Good question.
Sure, let me bring it up for, um, is that the body art establishment?
No, that's the opt-in code, uh, for, for the the building code.
Uh, you're welcome to ask a question, but it may not be able, we may not be able to answer it.
It's not the planning board's article.
No, I know it's not, it's mine.
No. Um, Roger, I'll give you some leeway, and you can ask a question, but I may not be able to have the board answer, so.
Okay, all right, so, uh, my understanding is that, uh, we, we've just, uh, uh, modified our stretch code. And, uh, and now we're gonna do potentially a, a, an additional modification. And I'm wondering, uh, how that affects the planning board? I mean, what kinds of things do you have to do when there's a change in the, in the building code? Does that, uh, I talked to the, uh, the, uh, building department, uh, you know, the inspectors, uh, Richard Asman, and he said it actually made his job easier, and I'm wondering if there's any issues that you see coming, coming.
So if I were to expand the question to, how do code changes affect planning board? I think Bill Nemzner, the question is, it really doesn't?
Not really.
I, I, I don't, so we, so generally speaking, Roger, the planning board uh, uses the zoning bylaws as our guiding document for making decisions and executing our roles and responsibilities for things like site plan review and special permits and other items. Uh, I don't think we reference code compliance regarding our, our responsibilities with zoning bylaws. So I think generally, the answer is it does not apply to us.
Okay, did you know that if it applies to anybody other than the building department? I mean, that was the obvious one.
Um, I'm not sure.
Sure.
And I think, I'm not sure. Bill, you want to help me out?
Well, I think, I think in general, the building, the building permitting process is, it, it really separate from, um, the planning board approval, which tends to be uh, demo, um, verifying conformity with the zoning bylaws and the, uh, various statutes that may apply to a, a particular application. This is in primarily, um, uh, limited to the, it would be limited to the building, uh, review, and, uh, so I don't see that there'd be really any connection.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is I just want to see if there's anybody that's gonna say, you know, we, we need to study this, or we need to wait on it, and, uh, because obviously, since I'm putting it up, I'm hoping that, uh, it can, can pass. So I'm looking for people that would, would have a reason to say, not now.
Um, I, I can't answer that question, uh, Roger, but I, like we said, I, generally speaking, code compliance is not part of our discussions when it comes to planning board.
Okay, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it, I'll let you get back to your business.
Thank you, Roger, appreciate the question.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Chairman, just one, uh, clock, uh, or, uh, what I say, clock application. You're talking about the four articles that you have at the town meeting. And the four articles can be discussed as one. One must be voted on individually. Okay, so it can't be a joint, it, because it's a, uh, zoning bylaw articles, it, by, cannot be unanimous. Well, there has to be voted on a two-thirds. The only way that can be done is to physically do a two-thirds or.
For each article.
So I, and, but normally, even if it was unanimous, each article should be voted on separately, although the moderator can suggest that since they're all similar, the discussion beyond the four, but voted separately.
So, understood. And that may be a strategy to speed up the meeting to.
Well, it is, it, it makes it much easier, and it, they're commingled the similarities in the articles.
Thank you, Jim. You're welcome. Any other thoughts or questions about town meeting? Anything else to add?
No, I think, I think we got it, and I have a good feeling.
Yeah. Um, okay, town planner update?
Well, um, Jim asked an interesting question at the beginning, uh, but then. Well, um, Jim asked an interesting question at the beginning, uh, again. Uh, it's out of some of, uh, any code complaints that. Um, made across and, um, and that. The answer was yes, there have been, uh, nothing particularly, uh, new, but there's some follow-up that we have to. Um, we, we have touch base with both market basket and with the capital group, and they're still working on. The two or three items that were outstanding. Uh, we also, because, um. It's become, uh, we've instituted a new. Policy for code reporting, because it, it, we have to get it. Uh, funneled into one location and it's, it, it. Let me add you properly and use our resources in a wise way, so now if there is a complaint. It's, it's easy, two-minute form to fill out, but we have, that Zoe put up there. What is the complaint? And the complaint will be acted on. If there's not a complaint or potential complaint that you think may be coming, there's nothing, you know, we're not gonna do the hassle. The complaint. Send it in, we'll act on it and send it to the right people, whoever has to take care of it. And that's how we have to do it, it's just, it, it's just, it's. That's, so that's where we can manage efficiently.
Yeah, one really quick question, um, this, so that last point about having an online system to register complaints. That's something that I brought up. Maybe a year ago, I don't know exactly when, but maybe, I feel like it's been a while, but maybe a year ago. I asked if there was a way to transition complaints from email or any observations from email to a documented system. That I can have, I can see and, you know, periodically and review. For me, it's about tracking these items, instead of having to always review and track emails, it's not efficient, I don't like doing it.
Right.
So this, part of this, I, I hope was tied to my request and, and nagging you to do so.
It was absolute.
Okay, um, I just wanted to give some context on that, that, this is something that I had requested a while and been asking for.
So that, that is it, um, I imagine there'll be some, you know, some people. They, they, it requires that, you know, you input that, what, the issues. Yeah.
And if somebody doesn't have a computer, is there a hard copy form that they can?
I, I think they could, they could, or they, they, they could call it in, I believe, and, but it would be. If the purpose was to complete the form, I think that would be accommodated, if it was to start a management system. I think it could be, would be wise that real quick. Uh, and so.
You've got a possibility, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. I'll double check that, though, I mean, we, because you're right about if somebody didn't have a computer. Uh, but on the other hand, we wanna make sure that the process does what the process is intended to.
Uh, just, is this a form specifically from the capital group project or is this?
No, 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 oh, no.
Okay, because I have had several conversations, I don't wanna double back too hard to the town meeting. But I have had several conversations with concerned citizens about the home based business bylaw. And one of their concerns involves enforcement issues, right, that, um. You know, there's been confusion, are we making the jet, the guidelines, are we opening up our town to every business that wants to be here or are we, you know? And part of the concern is, okay, so my, my neighbor opens up a business and they go through this process and they get the thing. And then they say they're only supposed to have trucks between seven and nine and they're there all the time, what do I do? Right, I'm a neighbor, I don't wanna get my neighbor in trouble, like, I think that that's part of, so, so this form, I wonder if. Something similar anonymous in unrelated, you know, like kind of a step back sort of way could be. A benefit to people who are concerned about those types of projects.
If, yeah, that's a great question.
Tom, is it generalized for any sort of observations or is it specific to planning, it's not specific just to planning?
No, again, a lot more for zoning board, way more for zoning board.
So I.
We don't do that many, like what Natalie's talking about, we don't get like near what Natalie's talking about, like will this form.
This new system, will it cover what Natalie's discussing?
No, because, because what she, what Natalie's talking about are inquiries about a specific bylaw, would it do this, would it do that?
I don't, no, no, that's not what.
Me complaining about her trucks.
If, if he wants to complain about, after the bylaw, whatever, if it passes or if it doesn't pass, whatever. Right now, if he wants to complain about my truck, trucking business and say. The zoning board said she could have trucks between seven and nine, she has trucks here at eleven. Who does he complain to? He doesn't know who to complain to now, that's, that's a lot of people's big concern.
Yeah, it would be the same, though.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
I feel like that's something that should be pointed out, maybe, I mean, if it comes up during the meeting, that's a huge, that people are concerned. That they are going to be tagged by their neighbor to being the complaining neighbor.
Well, that, I'm not, that's, well, that's a good question, because, yeah. Yeah, I don't know that, that, that's a law thing, a legal thing, and we're checking on it now, some, um. Uh, in some areas, it's illegal to have, take anonymous complaints for that.
Yeah.
We're checking that with legal, that, that'll be. I do anonymous complaint now. I don't know if you can.
I think it might right now.
I mean, obviously, if you call it in, if you call it in and said, you know, like, the, the.
Does.
I can tell you, does Rick take anonymous complaints?
Yeah.
I, 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 I think there's phone calls he's taken, I think.
Maybe I shouldn't.
I'm sure the police take anonymous complaints.
Yes, yeah.
But, but here, on the other side, on the other side, because I do see what goes on here, somebody calls in and says somebody's operating a. Beef jerking factory in their house, you know, and, and it's not supposed to be there. If there's a specific address and a specific issue, somebody will check it out. Okay, so now I'm not, does that mean that every complaint is called in? No, everyone that goes to our office, somebody will go out, but not. It, it's gotta be who, what, when, where, why, we gotta know what we're doing, not, I think this may be going on here, whatever.
Right.
Or, or, and we'll go over and check it if we have, we know where it is, you know, if somebody, I, we hear that. Easily a couple times a week, you know? So I got, today I got a, um, commercial vehicle, you know, you can put a commercial vehicle now, uh, under a certain weight. Or you could, you, it's, you can have it by right at your house. So somebody called today and says, is there, I think there's two commercial vehicles. I sent a picture of it, and I don't know if it's commercial or what, just send the police to look at tags. But, so something like that, it's like I said, there, somebody will get to it. Uh, if it's, if it's information like that, you know, but.
So this is a town effort under O M S?
Well.
The Office of Municipal Service.
That, it's a double edged sword, because it. All this, that kind of stuff falls under the building commissioner as the zoning enforcement officer.
But what I'm saying is, this, this isn't a planning board thing, this is a town admin thing, and this may help planning board items.
Yeah, okay, so, and, and it also helps, this, uh, really bringing this to forefront was the economic health committee. Because the issue was about how to, um, if you remember when we did the, the, um, minimum property maintenance bylaw. And, and, um, the ideas that would help.
What, I didn't get credit for this now, it's E D C that gets credit?
Wow. Incredibly after it starts working.
Right, yes, that's a good point, let's, let's see how this plays out first.
We didn't, I just.
But let me, let me tell you, so many of our special permits, people have raised concerns about enforcement of whatever the issue is. Beneficial to, not, it does not, not us specifically, but I think it will be over, beneficial overall, so when people bring up. Concerns about enforcement, we can point them to this tool and say, there is an avenue.
I had quite a conversation with, uh, a resident on Thursday. About enforcement and, and stuff not being enforced, and I thought, well, you know, what specifically was? Uh, cause I mean, I'm not aware of a lot of stuff, and if, I'm not saying it doesn't happen, but if we're aware of it. It usually is done, I mean, and more, way more with the zoning board than you guys, because it's, uh. We do so many, have the little ones, you know? And, um, we try on it, I mean. And if it's a definite report. Somebody will go out and look at it. So Bill, what I heard you say before is, you fill out something online and then you send it to the correct person.
Not me, but it will.
It gets sent to the correct, but I didn't hear the elements that. Our esteemed chair was advocating for, which is a process that the status of the actions can be monitored log. So that it's like, oh, call came in on Tuesday, person went out on Thursday, found it was no big deal, case closed on Friday.
Yeah, that's all.
Is that all captured and.
Yeah.
Accessible to the people who need it.
Yeah, I, 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 I have, I'm not sure the exact way it's done, but it is tracked and, uh, cause it's not, you know, it's not something.
It's not something I keep up, but.
I'm also willing to learn, we can all learn through this, right, and improve it over time, so if it starts off that we have a system. Where it increases the ability for people to provide observations and log those observations, we start there. And I would, what I'm looking for is improvement towards, what I would say the North Star for me, is to be able to. Periodically, as we talked about, every couple weeks, once a month, whatever it is, review a log list.
Sure.
And see, and just look at the sort of status of that.
Yeah, that would definitely.
I mean, I'm not asking for that tomorrow, but my, I think if we're working towards that direction, I think that's what I'm interested in.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
No, you, that's what I, that's what you've mentioned before, and I think, I think having, being able to say, okay. Uh, the anonymity, anonymity question aside, um. Being able to say, you know, this, this address has resulted in X amount of complaints or, you know. Yeah, and other, you know, daddy could come from is, is crucial to.
So I did cut you off, though, and you were answering Bill Grenchow's question, whether that can be, those items can be logged now?
I believe it is, okay, yeah, and, and, um, I, I think it's a, it, I don't know if it's, if it's sat in a lacquer. But I think it's a question of call came in today, uh, from such and such, uh, corrected, you know, and, um. Because I, I think Rick needs it for his. You know, he has to have a, a blog for himself, and I think that's something Zoe keeps, but I, I have to check on exactly how it's done. Um, but, yeah. The reason we, oh, sorry, Jim.
Oh, wait, thank you.
The reason I got into it and, and Julia, the health agent, and this was to basically to help Rick where we can, because he was so.
Jim? Yeah, I have a, uh, comment to make, I guess. It is, when we did the walk-along, uh, or in my case, the ride around. Um, one of the comments, then, and I made it to you when you incorporated in your, uh, report. Was the closing of the covers on the dumpsters. And I realize it's awfully hard for capital group to enforce, because it's an individual situation. But driving around not only. Upstate one twenty-nine, but also downtown, uh, in Nellor Court. Uh, there are a lot, a lot of open lids and dumpsters, I know it's hard to enforce. Especially individually, but is that something that health agent could, uh, do something about? Because we're coming into summertime, not only is there a, a, the, uh, stuff piles up and gets windblown. But also, uh, a lot of garbage gets thrown in these, and they become a breeding ground for mosquitoes and, and all things. Rodents, and I would think that that's something we should, um. Maybe another enforcement off, so like the health agent who goes around a little bit. Could reinforce that for us.
I think I could.
And for the town.
Could you send me an email about that?
I certainly can, so.
You send me an email about that, and I can run it up.
I sure.
Total disclosure, Jim emailed me about this and I forgot and ignored it, so, but thank you for bringing it up again, Jim. Well, the, the thing is, the other thing is, you know, I, we have an initiative to put. The, the. That's a good initiative, that's a good. To, um, have a, a, a dumpster collection area that's at the screening for the Nellor Court a little bit. A little bit, but, you know, the screening, um, and, uh, at one point. I don't know if, how many of you are on the board for that, but when we were drafting the minimum maintenance bylaw. I wanted to throw, uh, a dumpster, um. Screening requirement in, that would have like five years. To get going, but you can't have unscreened dumpsters. And I got a little bit of pushback on that, enough where, you know, we removed it from the, um. I would have taken that title, but, but, uh, at the time, E D C was working on it, I thought, well, we should wait a little bit. Maybe make the dumpster screening requirement. You know, look at it coming up, so we may wanna revisit that again, anyway. Because I, it's just for our aesthetic, our downtown aesthetics, I mean. You know, and we're not talking that big of a, a project.
If we wanted to, we could put that in our regs.
We did.
So we reply to whatever projects we.
Oh, we did, we do, but that's for our, our new project, especially.
No, I'm talking about for new, for existing.
No, we were.
Cover your.
Yeah.
Your dumpster in our reg?
We have something like. A screen. Yeah, some, some dumpster training, it's in plainboard regs. Something to that fact. And, um, you know, and. But I'm talking about the problem is for existing.
Yeah, not our suburb, but our board.
It would be.
Our suburb only under certain. People come for special permits on that, right?
Yeah, oh, sure, yeah, for ours. Yeah, I mean, if it's, if, once they're in.
Or something new.
Once they're in, yeah, yeah.
Um, so what other planning updates do you have?
Um, well, we have, um. And let's see, next week. Move with who everything's gone all town meeting all the time, um.
What do we have for our next meeting?
I don't, I don't have anything for our, our second meeting in, um, May, I don't have anything at this point.
Would, uh, would others be okay if we canceled the meeting, um, I'll give another week for applicants to.
They can't make it, now again.
So there's no possibility for having an applicant?
No, because I can't advertise it, because it's, um. We, we've got our advertising, uh, uh, since we've gone into Metro West daily. We can do it way quicker than we used to do with, um. Beacon Village, but we still, I gotta have, I can't. The losses, they have to have it, uh, placed fourteen days prior to the meeting for no, no less. I, I can't, uh, somebody could walk on with a non, uh, my advice, you know, let's wait, let's wait till next week. And so there's like, so we wanted a minor determination, they could do it, and so we had A and R, they can do it, um.
Alright, so would everyone be okay if we waited till next week and then, does anyone, anyone planning to keep meeting in two weeks? You want to keep the meeting in two weeks, Jim?
I'm sorry.
You can cancel in two weeks?
Uh, I think we could, uh, um, wait, and then, and then cancel, make it a cancel. Something might come up that'd be more the trust narrative than, uh, a, a formal, uh, situation and. And, uh, we're on board, we need to be able to be responsive.
Yeah. We wait till next week, really good, that doesn't, just get off our back.
What else, Bill, you got for planner update?
Um, I, the last thing is the grant, I think you also, I guess, around you, but we did get the grant for helping, um. Sixty-one Summer Street Reuse Committee, so. That, that's good, then. And road diet grant went in.
What's that, explain that?
That is where I've been asking for a couple of years, uh, with D P W. To come up with a conceptual plan that widen the sidewalks on Main Street between. Walton Street by McDonald's and the Triangle at Nasa Street. And the purpose is to enhance the potential use of the public area there. For everything from outdoor dining to, um, traffic calming by, cause it would narrow the roadway a bit. We wouldn't, um, we could do it in such a way that we didn't lose any parking, but. In any, uh, you're taking such a short area. It, it could only help our businesses to have, you know, slower traffic go by and hopefully maybe people thought of it, they never even saw before.
Does it imply complete street design?
Totally, totally, totally. So, if I, I, if I get that, um, it would be a quite, it would be a conceptual plan. Uh, the biggest concern right now to actually. Uh, the biggest concern right now to actually building it. Would be if uh we have to make sure that there's no sewer work. Or water work is going to be done after we put down a brand new sidewalk. It's like, and that's why Justin, I've been working close to Justin on it. And uh he feels it's definitely be. A good time there. He knows there's improvements that are going to have to be done. And he thinks this could all dovetail nice. So that would be kind of neat.
Also a great opportunity to work with the tree committee. And we can expand the tree.
You could expand the tree. That's right. Right, right.
And apply for. The ABC, the ABC, what, no, the. The marijuana grants.
Oh, no, no, CDE.
CD, right. I knew, I knew it was.
Yeah.
I knew it was an order. Yeah, CD.
ABC.
And don't forget improving the lighting.
And lighting.
Thing of which, I, I went on that arboretum walk with the trees committee.
Yeah.
I wasn't planning board updates.
Yep.
Oh, yes.
Great. There was someone from. Department of Conservation and Recreation DCR. There was a DCR forest.
Oh, is that right?
Yep. She gave me, I got a, I got some swag. I got a book on trees of Massachusetts. For no kid. Yeah. She seemed very part of our efforts. Uh, last week Julia was there for a hot minute.
Oh, Julia's up there.
Yep.
For a hot minute. The, the, the tree committee invited the planning board. I'm glad you got to.
I know I R S V P did. I thought I R S V P'd as a regular person, but it turned out I R S V P'd as a member of the planning board. So I'm glad I checked that out.
So that means the swag actually belongs to the planning board. What's your open meeting logs?
Hundred twenty-five dollars. But this is from a state agency, so I think they're probably allowed to give us resources.
I think the chairman set you up.
You get on my book.
On a similar note, I went to the tree planting that occurred right outside here about two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Which was very fun to watch as well. Nice. The tree is planted. There is a little ceremony. It now has a plaque. Uh, the tree is a. Sour.
Sour wood?
Sour wood, yeah. Sour wood, sour wood.
The name.
Native, but hearty as well.
Very good. And, oh. I'm sorry. The only other thing that happened, um. I forgot. To tell you guys, um. Zoning Board last. Meeting. There was a discussion on um. A potential firearms and. The potential uh what to do about that. If they wanted to take any action with requiring a special permit in certain areas. Uh, right, they're gonna, right now it's, uh, Chris, you were there.
Yeah, I, I was there. I can, I can provide some data.
Yeah.
Uh, Senator Eldridge was on to discuss. Uh, with the zoning board appeal. Uh, regarding um the, a member of the zoning board appeal looking to propose. Um, to, to make changes to the zoning bylaws to include. Um, a use regulations regarding firearms dealerships and sales. Um, it seems that our zoning bylaws uh lack that entity um relative to other types of uses. Um, many, there's other towns that are also implementing similar zoning bylaw regulations. And so there was a discussion with Senator about it. Um, the, the zoning board appeals asked if the planning board can contribute to this effort. And I said. Uh, Smith, perhaps starting in June, we, we, we could consider setting up a subcommittee similar to the home-based businesses that we did. Uh, which would be at least one member from each committee discussing what that regulation could entail. Um, but we would, we can discuss that in, in June. I said we would discuss it after town meeting. I didn't want to commit anything prior to your town meeting itself. Um, but that was what we discussed and that's what I said. Did, did I miss anything?
No.
Any questions on that?
Is that? Paul, yeah. I asked uh Jeff to come in and. Introduce himself because the. Bob, put your clothes on.
He's still here.
Yeah, uh, my name's Jeff Black. Uh, I've been living in Maynard for just about three years now, moved here uh. Beginning of pandemic, my wife, um. Been on the Conservation Commission last couple of years. Um. Just had my second child, so I'm still thinking to. Maybe take a little step back from full committee membership and. I emailed Bill previously about, um. There was ever an opening on the planning board, I'd be interested to be. Reached out. So there was an alternate role available, so. So yeah, I'd be happy to, you know, uh. Serve as an alternate. Um. My day job, I'm a civil engineer. Um, so I do a lot of. Presenting to boards like this for, for my day job. So, you know, familiar with zoning bylaws and site design and stormwater and. All that sort of good stuff. So thought it'd be useful, you know. Use my powers for good, maybe. Uh. Um, so yeah, that's a little bit of, a little bit about me.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming in. If you have me. Um, any questions for Jim? I'm very happy to have all engineers. Participate in our meetings. So you're not coming here too much for me about that. Yeah, um, anything then? No. Okay, we have um. As of now, we have a net. Uh, Jim and myself scheduled to reappointments in June. Uh, that is, that's pending, but it will be on the, one of the select board meetings in June is what we were told by um town ad administration.
That's right, right. It would be good to get um. An alternate appointed. You know, at the same time, probably.
Okay, so we'll work on that. If you're still interested, we will work on. Um, making the appointment uh as an alternate, the alternate's position for.
One year.
There one year.
I think, and our, our, one thing about our alternates, I believe everybody hears them alter. I think I'll be good then. Alternates. The, the, the point is the alternate does stuff. It's not, it's not, I, I think, I think it could hold more less. And, and um.
Jim was chair of the planning board for, uh, you know, a long time ago. So I don't know if it counts if he was a recent alternate.
Jim, well, I've got the guy been an alternate before too, before he was a chair.
No, I wasn't. Actually, back in the day. Uh, that was elected office. The planning board was elected.
Oh, boy.
Okay. So I was elected four times.
Oh.
For more five year terms.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Relax. Well, you're an alternate here. You started as an alternate. Really came back, huh?
You start the ball and work out.
You're not a wallflower. You're an alternate. Drew Paul.
Very true, very true.
There's no wallflowers in here.
No.
Oh, you're doing right of that?
No, no, typically I would ask if you have any questions about what the planning board responsibilities are, but it sounds like you have centered with that already.
Yeah, yeah.
Pretty familiar on that process.
Most of our work lately has been special permits and site plan reviews.
Okay.
I think that's the most common items.
Yeah.
So what's wrong with the conservation?
Nothing really, nothing really. Just a good chance.
You, are you, you're really familiar, or you must be with the, um, you could bring kind of a, um. A, a more of a, uh, we're losing Bob who has a background in. You know, water resources and that type of thing and that's. He's been with us and. Maybe big time now.
Don't worry, Bob will be back. He's on tour. He's.
Get him back.
Oh, he got on CBC.
Let him, let him down for a week.
He hasn't bring up CBC in here.
Oh, he's director of boards now. So we just call him up and tell him.
He is?
Yeah.
Are you really? He has a complaint form and everything.
Oh, good. Well, then, then, oh, that's good. Cause I got A and A stuff for you. Oh. Oh, yeah. Yeah, oh, yeah. Right. Okay, yeah.
All right, any other?
Everything's connected.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be, I'll be attached to my other capacity. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Um, I think that the board, um. I hope that we can, we have a good. I have a good feeling about town meeting. I think our stuff's gonna be fine.
You do. Any other thoughts from the board? Any updates from the board?
I'm just gonna say out loud, at some point I do want to start working on the. Ex, ex, uh, uh.
accessory?
accessory dwelling unit thing. But not now, but soon.
Yeah, I mean, and it, whatever, I, we've got the resources, you know.
Have anyone on the zoning board who's interested?
Yeah, who was it?
It was the one who you said left.
Uh.
I emailed him and then he left the board.
Uh.
You know, I could use.
I'll get some.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, nice. We'll, we'll, we'll provide someone to talk about firearm.
Yeah, that we could do that.
Someone to talk about EDUs.
Great. Um, oh, one other thing, I just got a, um, I think all of you have been in that, you may not have been, but. Uh, CPTC is having the chapter forty A, the citizen planner thing. Um, they're having the chapter forty A class with. Does anybody, have you guys all take it or do you want to take it? Does anyone want to take it? It's um, can you email all of them?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I'll send it around. Um. They, it's a pretty good course. Okay. Yeah, and if you need that one.
We. And the last thing for me, uh, by update would. Would be a couple of months ago, I offered to see if there would be interest in having a Saturday coffee meeting just to talk about. Upcoming items, um, or just in general. Um, because we never, we found we were very busy, never had time to. To connect on sort of other big picture stuff. Um, I wanted to wait till after town meeting because we were, we, it still felt very busy. If, um, but if things seem still light, um. Perhaps in June. Or July, you could make, maybe have, have a coffee. On Saturday. And still check out the fire station. I want to check out the fire station.
It'd probably work out better in the afternoon, late in the afternoon, and then after porch.
He's trying to make it not.
You might have to put something in.
I can't, I didn't say.
I can't.
Good point. That's now that you mention it.
Are you suggesting, uh, if planning board meeting located at GG's, is that what you're suggesting?
Well, I'm gonna watch you.
Anyway, uh, if you're still up for the idea, I'm still trying to, still trying to fit it in to make sure that. I don't want to burn up this one either though, so.
Yeah, and I have one question. I just, out of my head, yeah. Sir, uh, you work for the same company that's our engineering. Are you, uh, is that correct?
Correct, yeah, I do work in aviation.
Would your, uh, and this is something we, I think we need to discuss. Eh, would you recuse yourself from any deliberations on any project that? Your company is providing the engineering for the town?
Yeah, I said, like in. I mean, doesn't mean you can do a lot of the peer reviews for.
Yeah.
So would that be?
Uh, I'm concerned that. Not with your integrity. I'm concerned that there would be an opportunity for a. Uh, a practitioner. To claim that there was a problem because you served as the, on the engineering portion of. A project and I, uh, I, I would hope that that would not preclude you from being a member of the board. But keep you clean and the board clean and sound clean. And any project that you will go and provide in your company comes to write in the engineering law.
Jim, on the, on the other, as applicant, you mean?
Yeah, okay.
Right, as an applicant.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Oh, as applicant, not as peer review?
No, peer review or any, any.
You're saying peer review then?
Oh.
Um, maybe. Maybe it'd be a good idea to get some town council advice on this. What do you think, Bob?
Yeah, and it may be an opportunity for, to request a state of particular. And they give you guidance as to how to manage the issue.
Yeah, I, this came up when I first talked about joining Conservation Commission. You know, I asked Wayne, I know it was Katie Young at the time. I believe she had asked the town council and, and there wasn't. It's with it, I thought, you know, I'm not personally one that works on the, the peer reviews themselves, um, but. You know, certainly that would be a cleaner. You know, optics thing, yes, certainly that was.
I would just not wanting. Come back any, any. Things are getting away of decisions that the planning board makes are your integrity.
Yeah, yeah, certainly.
And the state efforts are paid in, doesn't cost you anything.
On the, yeah.
Value to it. Because you submit a written request and they'll help you complete it. And then they'll issue a written decision that will set the four corners. And you can rely on that.
Yeah, yeah.
May I ask Jeff and Bill that you?
Sure.
Get together and work on that?
Is it, would I send it or would Jeff? Or does it matter?
Jim would send it.
Okay.
Can, can town staff help?
Yes.
Okay.
Correct.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Make, make them do all the legwork.
Yeah.
Right?
I'm sitting at home, throwing my thumbs up.
Oh, you are? Oh, well.
I could, I could be a person.
Okay, yeah, I'll get that.
It might be helpful to have that lined up or at least the request in and submitted prior to an appointment being made.
Hmm.
And help, right?
Okay.
Yeah. We heard the other thing you might. Wanted to make sure of. Is asking your management of the H P if they've had somebody else who's already gone through it. Um, they may be able to direct you to. An opinion. The other thing is if you just call the state efforts, like the majority of the dead. And they can tell you if they've already issued related opinions.
Oh, that's a good idea. That's good. I can't imagine they haven't come across.
Well, it's just, you know, it's. A lot of times the, the questions of, well, the opinion is a factor. And so it's like, what you write me. Yeah, but there may be enough guidance out there that you don't need to do it. I know that, like, one of the things I had in mind was was doing that. For Parker Street because I'm in the border. And, um, you know, from the crossing and, you know, it's, um. Uh. It, it's something that just can't get input on a side of the things. It's, it's easier to deal with it before you come in.
Yeah, yeah.
I would think if we had it written, that word, that way there we can put the, the bed. Before the.
Yeah.
Time starts.
Okay. See what happens with that.
Thank you. Any other final thoughts? Thanks, Dean. Great, great meeting. Jim, would, would you mind?
We're happy to. I would, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the meeting tonight.
Yeah, I'll say that.
Uh, motion to close has been made and seconded. All in favor by hand? Five zero, six zero to close.
Good. Thanks, everybody.